So we are live streaming tonight for the first time over K-Gym. And hopefully, we have an audience live streaming on the website. So we appreciate K-Gym for doing that. We'll hear a little more about that later, I believe. But it is live streaming. And now if we can get the technical things worked out, we will also be able to hear it in here. So is that better now?
Right.
All right, wonderful. Then with that, we will adjourn the special Board of Education study session at 7:13 and convene the regular Board of Education open session meeting. If everyone would rise, would say the pledge of allegiance. Rob?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let the roll call reflect that. All the board members are here. Kavanaugh's here, except Ms. Wu, and she is on her way. She's in and out of the meeting, but she is here. And Dr. Jackson is absent this evening and excused. Item 2.4 is a report on our closed session held earlier today. In that closed session, we considered two expulsion cases. We took no action in that, but they are on the agenda for later. Item 2.4.1, our study session, we've talked about the data that was generated by our local control accountability plan, and no action was taken. Order of business, 2.5, is there anything to be moved or changed in the order of business? We are going to move item 3.1.4 up before 3.1. We have a business person here that needs to get out quickly and helped us so much, we're going to move that item up to give them the opportunity to go on about their business. Anything else on order of business? No. Item 2.6, approve the minutes of March 25 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, moved to second. Any discussion? Ms. Maracana, please take the vote.
Board member Hammond.
Yes.
Board member Zuko.
Abstain.
Board member Williams.
Yes.
Board member Wong.
Yes.
President Gilliland.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero with one abstention.
All right, then with the change in order, we will recognize Jack in the Box and Christina Nangera, the manager, for helping us out during the time when Santa Fe was out of water and needed some help, and she stepped right in. So Dr. Sweeney, if you would introduce her and...
Absolutely. Ms. Nangera, please.
Dr. Palienswini, Principal of Santa Fe Middle School. So thank you, Board, for having us here. I would love to present Ms. Christina Nangera. She is the manager of the Jack in the Box on the corner of Duarte and Myrtle. Last week, unfortunately, we had an incident where Santa Fe became without water for an extended amount of time, and we went to Jack in the Box and we said, "Can you help us?" And without hesitation, with a smile on our face, absolutely, Jack in the Box took us in 100 percent. She had approximately 40 middle schoolers come through her Jack in the Box that morning and helped us out in our time of need, so we really, really appreciate it. Thank you so much, Jack in the Box, for everything that you've done for Santa Fe.
So Ms. Nangera, if you would meet us right up front, the Board would like to come shake your hand and give a picture opportunity and say thank you. Is this microphone on? Everybody here okay? We will move on to item 3.1, and the Board would like to recognize and congratulate Monrovia High School 2014-15 academic decathlon team and their coach, Ann Van Dyke. And we've talked so much about academic decathlon, and we're so proud of this team. Dr. Therosian, would you like to say a few words?
The academic decathlon competition is one of the most rigorous competitions that our students and students around the country participate in, or in which they compete on a yearly basis. And it really defines the ability for our students to think critically and have a substance of knowledge at their fingertips. And we're so fortunate to have the guidance, students had the guidance that they needed, as well as some very committed students putting in a great deal of time out of the school day to prepare. It's great competing when you're at the top of your game, and these kids will represent us well in the future. Thank you.
Oh, well, I will let them thank you.
We can do it together. How's it?
We'll do this together. You handle me, and I'll handle those two.
Perfect. Bailey Bryan. Nicholas Shepherd. Everybody else is home studying.
All right, you can come up front. If the Board would join me up front, we'll congratulate these young scholars and have a photo opportunity here. annual MEO games, the Monrovia Elementary Olympic Games, have become such a part of Monrovia and gives our elementary kids an opportunity to compete in all kinds of activities and competitions over at the high school every year. So we would like to recognize those that put this together.
This is the 10th year in which we have hosted the MEO games at Monrovia High School, and there's really one architect for this extraordinary event, and that is Dana Elliott. So I'd like for her to come to the podium and help us recognize. We'll have some pictures scrolling through the screen for the remainder of this presentation, but it really is an extraordinary partnership between parents, schools, and the district. And it came from an idea that a teacher had about students competing all together and going to a place where scholars and champions thrive and seeing their good work there. It's such a great event, and it is extraordinary that it's happened for 10 years. So the queen of the games, Dana Elliott, will help with this.
Well, thank you very much.
While Dana is reading up, I'd also like to call attention to Heather Warren, PTA Council President, who has gifts as well for each of the individuals that we are recognizing.
This cannot happen without a lot of people working on this together, and it's become that the same people have worked on it for such a long time that I just have to kind of email them now, and they just do their thing. It used to be like, "We need to meet. We need to get together," and now they just do their thing, and I couldn't do it without them. So Ann Battle, please come on up. And this is a person that was with me from the very moment this was conceived, because Stacy Ayers used to be at Champions for Change, Nutrition Network. This whole thing was going to be a Saturday event. I wrote Monrovia Schools Foundation grant. We were going to do it on a Saturday. All of a sudden, the elementary principals met and said, "We're not doing it on a Saturday. We're going to do it on a weekday." And I called Stacy and went, "Can you help me?" And she just jumped right in. And Nutrition Network used to do, before they unfortunately were no longer funded, such a huge part of this. I wish they were here to recognize them, but Stacy, thank you. And Randy Hare. Don't see Randy Hare. Randy Hare's track coach at the high school. Rob Cady, I don't see him either. He's our announcer extraordinaire every year. Daniel Magallanos, he is not here, I don't think, but he's the Monrovia High band director, and the band is the first thing that the kids see when they come. The band's out on the field, and so one day, many of those kids in the stands are also in the band when they get to Monrovia High. And we have the elementary principals, PTAs that help support this as well financially and manpower-wise. So Brad Oaks, thank you very much, Brad Oaks PTA. And Monroe PTA. And Plymouth PTA. The very first group that helped to finance and has financed every year since the start is the Monrovia Schools Foundation, and it was because of their grant application that this actually started. So thank you, Monrovia Schools Foundation. You've been incredible all these years. We've also had Foothill Credit Union be our sponsor, and thank you to Foothill Credit Union. We welcome you this year. Food services, the kids all eat in the cafeteria, and Ken Singleton runs the food that day, which is kind of an amazing feat. And his staff, Alex Palaeo and Lourdes Martinez, but I know... Oh, Lourdes, there's Lourdes. You snuck in. And the cafeteria manager at the high school, June, are you here? I don't see June. No, okay. And the staff there, Millie Ramos, I'll just read off their names quickly. Rosavella Alvarez and Martha Contreras. And Esmeralda Corales. And Jennifer De La O. And Mercy Diaz. And Sonia Monserrat. And Christine Rodriguez. And Fontaine Saxton. And Charles Segovia. Elena Cabrera. They have to get up early in the morning to get all our breakfasts, so... Kathy Shepherd. Tamar Catatorian. And Amy Direk... Sorry, I just launched right into the principals. And the principals who come out every year and are supportive every year, and thank you very much, because they have a huge job that they put this together. So Amy Direk from Brad Oaks. Cindy Athrap from Monroe. And Suzanne Heck from Plymouth. And this all started back when Kurt McGinnis was an elementary school teacher, then went to the high school and made it just the easiest transition for us to use the high school, never worry, never care. And he even gave me a walkie-talkie this year. And Darvin Jackson, who was the principal at Monrovia High when this all began, I believe. And then we also have Patrick Garcia, who helped us set up our rotations that the kids do this year with our CDI and our American Heart Association. And I do have to just really quickly have one young lady come up. We have a MEO alumni who's going to come up just to say a little bit about her experience. She was in the games last year, and this is Allison Menlove. Please welcome Allison.
Members of the Board, thank you for having me here tonight. I am glad to have had the opportunity to be a part of the MEO games last year. These games teach sportsmanship and allow fourth and fifth grade students to have the chance to have fun and compete together. The MEO games helped me become familiar with many sports and not just the sports I play. I had so much fun being a part of the MEO games, being a part of the MEO games. Two years ago, I was cheering my team on, and last year, they were cheering for me. It made me want to try my hardest, and I was able to bring the gold home. I had so much fun that I asked my dad this year if I could miss a day of school to cheer Wilders on again, and he said, "No." I am so glad that this opportunity is provided to the students of Monrovia. I hope the MEO games will be around for many years to come, and I am sure I will ask my dad every year if I can come back. Thanks.
If the Board would join me in saying thank you to these folks. of the Woman of Distinction Award given by Congressman Judy Chu. We're so happy. Dr. Therosian, would you like to say a few words?
As Ms. Hirsch makes her way to the podium, what I'd just like to say is how fortunate we are to have somebody of Susan's caliber and commitment to the district. Not only is her daughter a proud graduate of Monrovia High School, and not only do the Hersh women dedicate their days and many evenings to the district and to the students of Monrovia, but Susan has given a great deal and created quite a bit within the community, most recently with the Healing Connections Parent Academy. She's able to marshal the many forces that lie within the community and harness them and find a vehicle through which we might help as many students as possible, and for that, we are eternally grateful. Thank you.
We appreciate you, Susan. If the Board would join me. I just skipped right over and saved the best for last. Jasmine Moratara is the recipient of the Golden Key this year, and we want to tell her thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you for having us this evening. So we can recognize outstanding students at Monrovia High School, as you've seen some of them already. Here's yet one more. Jasmine Moratara is one of a select group of kids. Over 300,000 students submitted works of writing, works of original artwork, works of original prose, theater, screenplay, and Jasmine was selected as to receive the top honor, which is a Golden Key. And this was all done on her own, done on her own time, because she has a passion for literature, a passion for writing, and a passion for sharing her voice. And we are super proud of her at Monrovia High School, as well as her family and as a community. So Jasmine, we look forward to more writing and seeing your name on many, many things, which I'm sure that's possible. So Jasmine, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. I wanted to be of help with them. I would very much like to read them.
I could email you. Could you? Yeah, of course.
It's just amazing, and our students and our staff and our volunteers just continue to astound us with all the wonderful things they're doing. Item 3.2, board member reports. Mr. Williams, I believe you have a report?
Yes, I do, President Gilliland. I am excited for the efforts of some, specifically Lance, who's in the audience, so I'm not going to say too much and take a thunder from you, Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Jason Techmaster Buchanan, and of course, our incredible Superintendent, Dr. Kathy Therosian, and my fellow board members. For the opportunity to be live streamed for all the residents, which includes the unincorporated area, can witness the diocese and all the decisions that we make on behalf of you, the residents of Monrovia, in this wonderful gem city that we live in, I am ecstatic, I'm excited. I can't find the words. I really can't, because a lot of my neighbors are witnessing as I speak, so I've got to watch what I say. But truly, Mr. President, I am very overwhelmed about this veneer we have now, this tool that we can mirror the efforts of the city council meetings by having live stream. Preferably, it'll encourage some of the parents to come in and participate, and obviously, there are other efforts that are going to be in place in the future. So with that said, I'd just like to congratulate this entire diocese for the efforts of cementing live stream for the school board of this wonderful district to be televised. Thank you.
We are so pleased that's happening. Anyone else? I just have one quick report from my seat. I received a letter from the Los Angeles County Office of Education reporting one site visit this quarter on review and uniform complaint data, and they gave us a good rating for Monroe Elementary, so that's a good... We like those good ratings from the County Office of Education. All right, item 3.3 is our student representative report. Alexa.
Kenny Oakes and Mountain Park are very busy right now as students are wrapping up the end of the school year, and they're getting ready to take the SBAC tests, and seniors are working on their senior projects. Many students have gotten their acceptance letters from the colleges they will be attending in the fall, and they are planning the next phases of their lives. There's a lot of anticipation also to meet the new assistant principal who will be joining us soon, so we're excited to meet them. We are starting a new sports season with our alternative league. We haven't won any soccer games in the past, so we are hoping for better results this time. That is all.
Thank you so much. Item 3.4 is a report from Dr. Therosian, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Gilliland. I do have one note that I'd like to acknowledge, and that is that on the 1st of April, Governor Brown announced a mandatory 25 percent decrease in terms of our water usage, and rather than take it as an April fool's joke, what we have begun doing is reviewing all of our processes to see how we can actually reduce our water usage. our water usage within the district. Some of the things that we've done so far are replacing 100... We have actually, right now, 100 waterless urinals, so that has helped, actually, in terms of the water usage. We're looking at methods through which we might look at drought-resistant landscaping and trying to check to see each of our, you know, where we're watering and making sure we're not watering sidewalks. So trying to be a little more efficient in our process, and Vince Marchetti, our Director of Maintenance Operations and Transportation, is helping us lead that effort. One of the things I would like to note in this is, in talking to City Manager Oliver Chi, he said we need to come up with something that really does work for a school district of our size. And we discussed the fields that we are currently redoing with the new irrigation systems at Santa Fe, Clifton, and Mayflower, and I want to remind the community that those fields needed to be redone because they are used as classrooms, and we want to make sure that all of our classrooms, the areas in which our students are running, are safe. And those fields needed to be entirely overhauled in order to ensure their safety as they are participating in intramural games or PE.
Thank you, Dr. Therosian. Thank you for the applause, too. It's not... You're looking at the water usage, it's not any... It's an ongoing thing. It's a difficult test, but it's certainly important right now. So thank you, Dr. Therosian. Item 3.5, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda. The Board of Education encourages public participation. Invites you to share your views on school business. Please complete the addressing the Board of Education forum and give it to the Secretary of the Board, Ms. Marikanda, or prior to the meeting, or now. In order to accomplish the board business in a timely and efficient manner, the public comment session for items not on the agenda will be limited to 30 minutes. We'll hopefully be able to hear from each of you, but we do ask you to respect other people's time that are want to speak during this time. So we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, if you could, please. Ms. Marikanda, who's the first speaker we have there?
Lance Mungia.
Thank you to the board and to Madam Superintendent for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Terrence, for your kind words about the livestream. That is why I've appeared before you tonight. I just wanted to officially announce that KGM is very proud to be livestreaming our first board meeting, and as Terrence pointed out, this is also going out to the unincorporated areas where KGM, as a cable channel, does not reach. But online, we literally could be in Paris or Rome and be seeing this meeting right now, so you never know who's watching. And I just wanted to just say that we are very happy with the partnership that we have with the school district, and we really do look forward to expanding that partnership in the coming months. You know, we've actually been very busy recently working with the school. We've worked with Susan Hirsch recently with the Parent Academy, and as well as doing a Healing Connections show, as you may have seen on KGM and online. And I also do want to point out that we are now archiving your school board meetings online. There's a YouTube channel that's been created specifically for that purpose, so that residents and yourselves can go back and look at those meetings if you'd like to. And we also... I've been working with Tom Rialli in the video production in the high school, and we are also very happy to work with Mr. Doll's government class at the high school recently for some election coverage. We were very happy to have some of the youth come in and get them involved in this election that just completed. So just wanted to say, we really do enjoy the relationship, and we look forward to continuing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mungia. We... Go ahead and applaud. We so appreciate the cooperation and the partnership we have with you guys, and it's been a goal of this board since I've been on it, to have live coverage of the board meetings for the whole school district. An incorporated area hasn't had access to that, and we're so happy that you guys have cooperated with us and made that happen. So thank you once again.
You're welcome. And I also would be remiss not to thank Mr. Buchanan and Mr. McClinton, who's filming right now, for helping us to figure out the technology of that and make that happen. So thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. ...
Stephen Cheng.
Hello, Board. Jason, Connie. I'm a watchdog at Mayflower School, and I wanted to follow up on the timetable for the Safety Camps project at our campus, Jason and Connie, and see when they may be comparing the bid that we provided with two others. And yeah, I have some parents here in support of that, and Jason's right there. Yeah.
We have not agendized that item, and we can't really discuss it if it's not listed on the agenda. I urge you to continue to work with Mr. Buchanan, Ms. Wu.
Oh, yes. Jason, you got my bid as you responded, and just we wanted to have an idea of maybe the timetable. If he can work with us and Connie.
You can work with each other and off agenda outside this meeting, and he'll be happy to get all that information to you.
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks so much for your help and all you're doing here, so for being here. Next speaker?
Heather Burkhart.
Hi. You guys probably recognize my name from emails, and I prepared my information based on the website that said I'd have five minutes, so I think I'm going to just wing this, because I'll go over. I have a son in kindergarten at Mayflower, and since the first day of school, I've been concerned about the lack of safety and security at our school. And I figured, well, maybe it's related to being a new parent at elementary school, and so I sat back and observed and wanted to see if it was a paranoia or if my concerns were valid. And the first week of school, saw a kindergarten girl walking at Mayflower with no attendant, adult, not knowing where she was supposed to be, because I stopped her and brought her back to the school. I addressed my concerns with our principal, and I was then forwarded on to the district, Mr. Marchetti, who kindly met with me at the school and showed me where the homeless were camped out behind the kindergarten playground the previous spring break, heard about other things happening on the campus, vandalism, things left on the property after the weekend, visitors that are allowed to go on our campus freely, because it's a completely open campus. The west side of our campus is wide open. Anybody can walk on during school hours, after-school hours, in the middle of the night. I am a nurse by trade, but I am very passionate about safety and ensuring and advocating for children, and I have to say, I'm quite disappointed in the responses that I've had from my school, from board members. I've been told that fencing is going to not happen. I was told by a school official today and two weeks ago that fencing is not going to happen unless something happens to a child. And this infuriates me.
Heather, can I interject?
No, please wait. I'm sorry, Stephen. I don't understand this. Our principal said safety is the top priority at the school, even above education, and I don't see how that can be. When a girl's restroom door has the emblem "Girls," and you can see it from the sidewalk, and any person can walk on the campus, go into that restroom, hide, and take a girl. I know this is a long process. I know this issue has been brought up for 14 years by previous parents. I'm very upset, very disappointed, very disheartened that our children are at risk because of some reason I can't get to the bottom of, but I'm determined to find it. I don't know if it's because of people winning votes, if it's because neighbors don't like the look of a fence, parents who want an open campus. All of these issues I understand, but the safety of our children comes before all of those reasons. There is not one reason for that school not to be fenced. According to the California Department of Education Safety Consultant, who I spoke to last week, said the first line of protecting children is wrought iron fencing, perimeter fencing, cameras, guards. Our children, five and six-year-olds, are walking from a classroom unattended by an adult to the restroom, open restrooms. Unacceptable. She said that is unacceptable. And yet, my principal says, "It's okay. Our school is safe. We're in a safe neighborhood." Unacceptable. And I hope to have answers. I hope... I'm sorry that my speech is kind of a mess. It was very formally put together and reviewed. I just passionately need you to listen to me. As a parent who loves Monrovia, who loves my child, who volunteers in the classroom every single Monday, goes on field trips, I'm passionate about this. And I am thankful for Dr. Therosian for sharing my passion. I need to see change. I think I went over my three minutes. Thank you so much.
And thank you, and thank you for all the information you've provided. Believe it, this board's priority is safety. And we have safety plans for every school. We meet with the police department regularly, have drills for earthquake safety, for shooter drill safety, to make sure that our students are safe, and we share that passion with you, and we appreciate your input. So thank you so much. Next speaker?
James Burkhart.
Thank you, Board. My name's James Burkhart, just mentioned. You said that there was safety meetings. Do you have a safety plan? When was the last time the safety plan was revised?
For Mayflower, specifically. I believe that was la... I believe it was done last fall, but we can check on that and get back to you.
When was the...
And I have to apologize, because I've just violated our agenda of discussing something that's not agendized. So when you ask questions, I will have to respond. Please work with our staff to get the answer to those, so.
Thank you. When was the last...
My natural reaction is just to answer questions as they come up, but because of our legal situation and responsibility, we can't do that.
When was the last safety, security assessment performed by the insurer of the district?
Like I say, we can't discuss, so we'll ask you to work with Dr. Therosian on these.
When was the last safety assessment performed by the Monrovia Police Department?
So, Mr. Burkhart, what I would gladly do is walk through each of those questions. It's just not going to happen in an open meeting when this is not an agendized item.
Okay.
Okay.
When we do talk about this, will these reports be reviewable by the public?
Please discuss... I know you have lots of questions, and I know you'd like answers right now, but it's not agendized. We can't hold our responsibility and discuss these. So Dr. Therosian will be more than happy to meet with you, discuss this, and answer your questions, but we just can't do that in the open meeting.
Can this be an open meeting on the next board agenda, on the next board meeting?
I'm not sure it would happen in the next board meeting. You can formally request in writing an agenda item be included for school safety or for one site, but you will have to request that, and then as it will fit in with our agenda items, we can look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, James. I don't think you want to wait two weeks for your questions. If you could submit the list of questions to the superintendent, she can work on that between now and the next time there's a board meeting. I don't think you want to wait two weeks for answers. It's a sticky wicket, doing the public's business in public when it's not agendized, and that's the reason why the hesitation, not because someone doesn't want to answer the questions. I want your questions to be answered. The quickest way to get those answers to you now is to submit the questions to the superintendent. We will direct staff to look at your questions. They will look at your questions and get answers to you probably before the weekend for most of them. Okay? I should use a microphone. There's people at home that want to hear this, too.
Will the recommendations be reviewed publicly? Will they be available to be reviewed publicly?
The answer to this question is this. You submit... I'm going to give you the process. If you give your questions to the superintendent, we're going to direct staff to look at these questions that you are delivering to them. They will do this in the most timeliest manner to get you those questions and answers as quick as they can, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You will have that, and it will be public the minute it hits your hand.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Marikanda.
Darby Vaughn.
Thank you to the board. I also have a question, which I'll just present to you, and I understand there won't be an answer immediately. I'll add it to their list. I am also a mother of a kindergartner at Mayflower. School is wonderful. Love his teacher. It's been a wonderful experience. I also have some extreme security issues. I've witnessed many things that Heather has as well. Some of the biggest concerns are five- and six-year-old children going to the bathroom unattended. It is frightening. We have seen people on the campus that clearly do not belong, and they're there throughout the day. When one of us parents is there, and when children are allowed to go to the bathroom unattended, we understand there's not enough staff to follow them, they don't always come back. They'll play, they'll run around, they'll swing around, so they risk injury, they're exposed, and they're clearly unattended. It's frightening. When there are substitutes, they don't come out always in their twos. They'll come out in groups and dissipate. So it's gotten out of hand, and it's gotten worse. So my question to the board is, which I'll add to their list, just so you know, what... How much money is allocated to each school within the district for security? We have none. Some schools are locked up like a fort. I get that it's ugly, and it's unfortunate, but this is the world we live in. Our children are not safe, and neither is the staff, and no one seems to be addressing it. I'll put my question on with them, but I've seen everything that Heather has, and it's bad. We have a large group of parents, and we're growing, so you might be seeing some more of us as time goes on, but we all have the same concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Marikanda.
Stephen Vaughn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for letting me speak. As you can see, this is an ongoing process of concern that we have for our children. I had a bunch of questions as well about the safety of our child in the school at Mayflower, which the education is wonderful, by the way. Thank you very much for that portion, but the safety is a definite concern for all the parents here. And when we do go through the process of submitting an agendized subject for that day, I would like to attend that meeting, and then we'll address the question. But you're saying that we can submit the questions and get the answers prior to the meeting. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'm a concerned parent about the safety at... I'm a concerned parent about the safety at Mayflower Elementary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Marakanda?
Tamua Newton, and I apologize if I mispronounce that. Okay.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I wrote down-
Tamua, if you'd speak into the microphone, then the people-
I wrote down what I needed to say, so I won't come up here and just be babbling along. My name is Tamua Newton, and I'm the present interim cheer advisor at Monrovia High School for this past season. And when I began at Monrovia High School, I was the JV coach. I was asked to be the head interim coach when the previous coach stepped down. At the time, we were, at the time that I was asked, we were into our second game playing St. Lucys. I happily took the position, and being involved with the cheerleading for the past 22 years, of those years, I've been a head coach for 12 years, involved with domestic and international competitions. I've prided myself on fundamentals and safeties as my teams within the Duarte area, the Pomona area, and also the Little League of Duarte Hawks. The team that we prepared was sharp, it was representative of the school. It was not, it was no different from at Monrovia. Upon taking the squad, we were the desperate need of the skill. You know what? I'm nervous, so let me just say what I need to say. I took on the position, being that the other coach stepped down. I was asked to be the interim coach. When, at that time, we were, we thought that we would get a position, a permanent position within the school, because we brought the team up to a skill that they didn't have when we started. So, as the time went on, I also put aside my personal life, which meant that I rescheduled my work life to be here at sixth period, I rescheduled my childcare to be here with my cheerleaders. At that time, the position, we were told that the position was going to be posted. The position was posted in October. Mary, Coach Mary and myself, Mary Caravale, was told that because we were the only ones that applied for the position, it had to be reposted, which was unfair to us, because we've done the work. Many compliments, we calmed the parents down, we calmed the parents down from saying, "We're going to go get an attorney," from all the things that was going on. So, the position was reposted again. At this time, it was reposted in January. I just had an interview last week. After that interview, this Tuesday, I was told that I was not selected for the position because they found someone that they were, that had what they need, yet I was never told what your goals were, or what you need, what you wanted for these girls. I was also told that not to tell the parents or the girls until this other coach was legally bonded by the board, which was unfair to me. Today, I walk into the school, and Mr. McGinnis is telling the girls that I'm not the coach anymore, and that they're bringing on someone with a better, that has better intent for them, and that's going to give them what they need. For one, he never called my references. He said, "This coach came highly recommended." You've never called my references. You've never came out to see what we've done with these girls. We've won competitions, first places. As for two, when you had, when the previous coach had the girls for two years in the skill that we gave them in a week she couldn't give them in two years. We feel like we were disrespected, we feel like we were used, we feel like just, we were, I don't even know, I'm nervous, but I don't even know how to put it, but it was unfair. And we, myself and Coach Mary, would like you guys to look into it and give us a fair shot, because we wasn't given a fair shot. I spoke with Ms. Therosian on yesterday, and we spoke a little bit, and when I spoke with her, she told me, "You're not giving me enough to say that this was unfair for me to even investigate." I wrote this down, I can give you guys copies of this, so that you can see exactly what happened. Also, if there was an interim pay, I never got it. The other coach, Mary, she came out here, she volunteered her time from, no, from September to now, and we get a call saying, she got a call saying that she wasn't selected, and she will not be asked back next year, which was unfair to us. Coming to Monrovia was like a highlight of my life, because I've always, coming from Duarte, it was like Monrovia was always our rivalry, and it was always hard to get into Monrovia. And, man, I was in heaven when I got here. But now, seeing the way that I've been treated with this position, and I put my best foot forward for this position. I was never given the proper tools to do what I needed, I was never given keys. I was hired on as a JV coach. I asked for these keys, and Mr. Eiler told me, "I cannot give you that," which was unfair to me. I took over a sixth-period class when these girls ran away two staff members because they didn't want them there. And when I took over the sixth-period, I couldn't even get a key card to get into the classroom that we're always in, even to this day. An email went out to them stating yesterday, I don't know what the email said, but they said that I resigned. I clearly did not resign. Ms. Therosian said, "Once you take a day off, because you seem a little emotional." And I thought that was a good idea, so I did it. So, once I got today, one of the girls called me and let me know, "Why are you not coming back?" Now, when you have kids crying, calling you, and your parents are calling you, it's not fair. You, the principal, or their hiring staff, did not look at what, not just our qualifications, but you never asked us, "How are we doing? How are the girls doing? Did you come out and look and see what these girls was doing?" You never did that. So, how, how, how do you know I'm not highly recommended? You didn't call the mayor of Duarte, because she was one of my, one of my point of contact, one of my references. You didn't call one of the board members at Duarte, because they were one of my references. None of my references were called, as well as none of Mary's were called. So, how do you know we don't come highly recommended? And I did speak with Mr. McGinnis today, and I told him, when I walked up and I was in the classroom, I went there about 11 o'clock, and I spoke with Mr. Eiler, and I let him know how I felt. I told him I was pissed off, and this was unjust, and it was unfair. When, as being in the off, Mr. Eiler's office, no one ever told me that they were going to have that meeting. When I moved my car from the front to the back, they were already in the classroom telling the class, having a meeting with them. How fair, how unfair is that to me? You didn't even let me talk to my girls. You didn't even let, and then you send out an email of which thanking Mary and I for the time that we were at Monrovia High, but I never got that email, and saying that I wasn't coming back next year. Now, I was never told that I couldn't come back, I was never told if I was supposed to stay. I was just told that, "I hope you stay on board until he gets the board approved." Now, if this happened to you, what would you do? If this happened to your child, how would you feel? So, I'm just asking you guys to give Mary and myself a fair shot, because we deserve that. How we were treated at this school is very unfair. And my parents, some of my parents are here, and some of them had to leave, but we would like a meeting with you all, or even with just Mrs. Therosian, because they are mad about it. And I'm mad about it, and I'm upset. Even some of my cheerleaders are here. If they all could have been here, they had previous engagements, if they all could have been here, they would have been here. But I can schedule a time to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and if you have information for the board, if you give it to Ms. Marakanda and Dr. Therosian, and then they will work with you on those issues. Thank you so much. Ms. Marakanda?
Brian Johnson and Amanda Sullivan.
Hello, members of the board and Monrovia. My name is Amanda Sullivan, and I'm representing the Monrovia High School Robotics Team, the Kings and Queens, and we are just liking to announce that we are going to the World Championship again for the second time in a row. Yeah, we were on the news yesterday on ABC 7, they did a little short story of us, and we're very thankful, but we still need Monrovia's help. Monrovia's been very supportive in the last couple of weeks, raising our, about our $14,000, but we're still about $1,500 short. So, if anyone would like to donate, all donations are welcome. It is a GoFundMe account called GoFundMe Kings and Queens 2015. And I'm very thankful, though, for Monrovia's support, and hopefully next year they'll make it again.
Hold up your banner.
These are our freshmen that are learning how to talk.
Well, clearly they're royalty. Why don't you come forward, and we can see what the banner says? Thanks for stepping up.
So, that's our flag for Worlds, so we could show it off, and-
If you speak right into the, speak into the microphone there, we'll-
Yeah, so, all right, thank you, Amanda. We had that flag made, so when we go to Worlds, we show it off and show them where we're from, and, yeah.
It will be shown around, and there's about 30 to 40 countries representing, coming to this tournament, and we are representing our small little town. We are one of the smallest towns competing, so it's a big honor. Thank you.
And we know you'll represent us so well. Thank you so much.
We have the clip, if you'd like to see any part of it.
Certainly.
New technology is putting local homebound students in class and on campus. It's thanks to the VGO system, which was demonstrated today during the LA Unified School District's board meeting. Using this system, students with health problems can pilot a robot around the campus. VGO allows the students access to instruction, and also they can socialize with students in real time.
New at six, some innovative local students are gearing up literally for quite a futuristic fight.
The Monrovia High School Robotics Team is heading to the FTC World Championship Robotics Competition for the second year in a row, and as eyewitness news reporter Amy Powell shows us, they need some help to get there.
Sir Lancelot is practicing his moves, getting ready to compete in the Robotics World Championships next week in St. Louis. The robot was built by a team of 10 Monrovia High School students nicknamed the Kings and Queens. They're still refining their robotic night in preparation for the big event.
Moving pretty smoothly, going up and down properly, just the final scoring element.
The robot will have to complete a series of challenges that involve picking up wiffle balls, and launching them into tubes, and moving up and down a ramp.
And you can basically now build it out of any parts, like natural materials. We are personally made out of a lot of aluminum and steel and plastic.
Senior Melissa Johnson will be Lancelot's driver.
It's like a dance between, you know, man and machine, like the robot has to perform, but I also have to perform, like just the robot by itself can't win.
The Monrovia team will be going up against 127 other international teams. And Sir Lancelot really has to be battle-ready. He has to compete against 63 other teams in his division to just to advance to the next level. Monrovia's team made it to the World Championships with a different robot last year, and was one of only 42 teams earning the right to come back this year. It will cost about $12,000 to make the trip. They're about $3,000 short, and have started a GoFundMe account. They'd like to win, but that's not the only goal.
To uphold basically our team name for our freshmen, to that, they have something to be proud of and to carry on next year.
Amy Powell, ABC 7 Eyewitness News.
Great job. Thank you for being here tonight. Ms. Marakanda?
Good evening, board members. I'm here to further communicate frustration about what's going on at Monrovia High School with the cheer squad. On, I'm a parent. My daughter is on the cheer team, and she will be returning next fall. Our problem is communication between Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Eiler, and the cheer program and between the parents. I'm not sure you're aware how much cheer costs, but it's thousands of dollars, and that's outside of what you see them wearing. There's tumbling, there's choreographers, there's outside training for them, it's not just high school football games and basketball games. So, when things go wrong, money is always the issue. Coach Tamua has set things up for next year for us to supplement the cost of cheer through her personal connections through the cheer world. Monrovia was to host a cheer competition, which would raise money to offset the cost for uniforms and things like that. I don't know if Mr. McGinnis took that in consideration when he made his choice to replace her after she performed well. She took the girls to Las Vegas, where they competed based off of eligibility that they had to achieve. Some of the girls were their first time at cheer competition, and they did well. They had a good time, they were looking forward to this coming year with the same thing. My daughter is pretty much in tears when she found out that Coach Tamua was not returning. Us parents were confused as we went through so much drama, about three months of drama. I had to take off work to deal with this. I've sent extensive emails to superintendent, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Eiler, about all of the things that were going wrong with the cheer program. Communication again, he never once talked to us to find out if we were satisfied with her performance. He never talked to the girls. His best interest, his responsibility to staff or to improve the cheer program is a joke. The girls need to be let in the restroom, to use the restroom after school when they practice every day. They practice Monday through Friday, the bathrooms are locked. He does not know that, because he's not there. I don't know what to do. We need an advocate to speak on the behalf of the parents to him, because he's not listening to us. So, your help would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have many more, Ms. Marakanda? Is that it?
The last, the last.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, then we will move on to public comments for items on the open session agenda. Comments may be made at this point, or at the time the item is considered at its place. Are there any comment cards?
No, I've received none.
Hearing that, we're going to recess for five minutes, take a short break, and we'll be back in five minutes. All right, we will reconvene. Moving on to item 4.0, the consent agenda, we have a request to pull item 6.1 and discuss it. That is placed on the agenda. Any other changes to the consent?
With that note, so moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marakanda, please take the vote.
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And with that, Dr. Throsian has an introduction to make.
I do, I am delighted to present to you Calvin McKendrick, who is the new Assistant Principal at Canyon Oaks Mountain Park. Calvin, I am going to ask you to get to the podium because I know that you had some people here, some of whom looked like it was getting past their bedtime.
Curfew, I'm sorry. Yeah, I had to send them on their way.
Calvin, I do want to say that Calvin absolutely distinguished himself in the interview process with his expertise. He has a Masters of Arts in Education from Aesop Pacific, Bachelors in Latin American Studies with a minor in Marketing Communications from BYU. We're actually going to try and use some of that expertise district-wide.
Awesome.
I should have, this is part of your other duties as assigned.
Sounds good to me, I'm ready.
In addition to his curricular expertise, he's recognized for his leadership as a mentor teacher, a BITSA support provider, and the Chair of the World Languages Department. He is fluent in Spanish and has created realistic pathways for students identified as English-language learners to achieve success beyond high school and via college or vocational training. Calvin is a proud alumnus of Mayflower Elementary School. And we are so happy to welcome him home.
Thank you. Can I add something to that? I'm sorry, I needed time to brag. I actually in the 5th grade won a T-shirt contest designing a new shirt for the Mayflower Mariners. So that's my claim to fame there, my stamp, my legacy on Mayflower.
I believe it's hanging in the cafeteria.
It is somewhere, it's framed. Since been discontinued, but definitely have a special place in my heart.
Calvin, do you want to recognize the person proudly videotaping you?
Yes, thank you. Like to thank my father who stuck it out, who has a later bedtime than the rest of my family and friends.
Thank you.
And again, to Dr. Throsian and Dr. Kaiser and the rest of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Our student board member wanted to wave to you from a distance. She said, "Oh, he's here, I have to go home today." I said, "You'll have plenty of opportunity to say hello to your new Assistant Principal, and we are very, very excited to welcome you aboard." Is there anybody else in your family who is connected to Monrovia in any way?
Max Volvo Service is just down the corner, just down the street, an auto shop here in Huntington.
He fixed my car.
It was 804 Huntington. Who's car? There you go.
Yes, he did.
Okay. Been there almost 30 years, this year or next year? It's going to be 30 years, the longest tenant there in the auto shop down the street. Another relative at Monrovia High School has been there about 25 years. So yeah, very connected. My grandfather lives about two blocks east here in DeWorty and is condo there, so definitely feel like life's coming full circle.
And it wasn't until after the interview that I realized that Calvin's mother truly has been our librarian at the high school.
Tina, yeah, Tina McKendrick.
Tina, sorry. For 25 years, did you say?
Yeah, I would say 89 or 90 when she started there. And every summer we'd go help her get the textbook ready for the next year, checked in and ready to check out. Barcoded, numbered, everything, oh yeah. So another specialty I have there, just.
Generationally Monrobian.
You bet, yeah.
Can we get back to the dad on the discount of the cars?
Oh, about that. I don't think that's on the agenda, so we can't discuss it, so.
Dr. Throsian already adds additional chores for you. Would you guys talk about that off-agenda?
Please, I don't want to get into some legal dilemmas already, so.
On behalf of the board, I want to say welcome and so glad you're here.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Alright, moving on to item 5.1, Status of Technology, Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, board and Mr. Gilliland. Tonight I'll provide an update on the Status of Technology at Monrovia.
The status is off at the moment, but.
Jason, once in a while needs a Jason.
Dr. Throsian told me earlier, there's no one like me watching over the presentations when I go out. Okay. As a department, we have developed our mission in alignment with the district goals. We will continuously improve our efforts to ensure staff and students have working technology when they need it. Technology Services delivers three key things to support that mission. Instructional technology to support, timely and accurate data reporting, and access to information for students, staff, and the community. Last spring, the board approved $650,000 for the purchase of new computer labs across the district. We've replaced every lab at every school, expanded the library at Clifton, added a lab in room 120 at Monrovia High School, and set up a laptop cart at Plymouth and Monroe. My team of five installed 725 new computers and other equipment to bring all our labs up to date. This year, the state updated the CASP test, which is the California Assessment of Student Performance Progress, also known as the Smarter Balance Assessment. My team installed the new test software in every lab. This week, testing started at Wildrose Elementary and Monrovia High School. My team was on-site to make sure everything went smoothly. One of the other critical functions of Technology Services is reporting data to the California Longitudinal Pupil Assessment Data System. I like the big acronyms from California. Or CALPADS. CALPADS is a state system that collects district data and publishes it so the public can look up information about Monrovia and other schools, such as student demographics, graduation rates, and discipline statistics. Roseby Merg on my team is instrumental in supporting the CALPADS process at Monrovia. CALPADS annual reporting happens in several stages throughout the year. We submit student demographic data in the fall, staff assignment data in March, and graduation, discipline, and program participation data in July. We are continuously working with staff to ensure that our data reporting is accurate. We use a program called Certica that analyzes our data for potential problems. We work with principals and staff to help them correct any errors they might have in their data. This week, we had our first error-free Certica student data validation report since implementing our new process. It's a big deal, so thank you to all the site staff and principals for making that happen. In October, the board approved $36,000 to implement identity automation. Identity automation transfers data between the various information systems at Monrovia. I'm happy to report we have finished the implementation process. Our student data system ARES, our staff data system HRS, our active directory, Google Docs, and School Messenger have been successfully connected. Now staff and student data move automatically between these three, these systems, eliminating the manual data input, freeing staff time and improving accuracy. And we're looking at adding more systems as we move forward. My team works hard to ensure that our users have access to technology when they need it. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question on tech I always have is, are we, and I think I may have asked you this last, my brain's going, the last one, is automating in some manner our registration those first weeks of school? Because I only had two children, but friends of ours that had four that had to fill out that three-by-five card four times with the exact same information, are we working on that at all? Is that a thing that we could do? I mean, we have more computers now. You're smiling, so I'm going to go with yes, that you've already taken care of it, it's going to happen, is that?
We actually are looking at, there's a new component to our student information system that includes parent registration, and so we're looking at doing the implementation this summer. So we're starting that, we're starting that planning process in my team right now, so.
Thank you very much.
If everything goes well, we should be good to go.
Thank you. That's good news. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Alright, moving on to item 6.1, Memorandum of Understanding with Citrus Community College District for Use of Facilities and Offerings of Credit Recovery Courses. Could I have a motion, please?
Some moved.
Alright. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, we have written a memorandum of understanding with Citrus Community College for the use of facilities and offerings for credit recovery courses this summer. They will be holding courses on our campus, hiring our teachers to teach them, and our students will be receiving college credit for those courses.
Any comments or questions?
Will it only be for credit recovery?
Right now, yes.
As a point of clarification, more than just credit recovery courses will be offered during summer school. This particular MOU identifies those that are for credit recovery. And what we have is an amended agenda item that identifies, the previous agenda item had a couple of names that were listed in error and it was not a comprehensive list. So this one actually has none of the names listed, so that we can go back and make sure that everything is accurate, but we want to make sure that we have the MOU in place for Citrus College.
But we are going to continue to work on more classes that are going to be credited at the J.C. level, offered at the high school.
Yes, we are.
That is the goal.
That is the goal. We have plans for the early college courses starting next year.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Ms. Marakonda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item 6.2, Informational Report on Canyon Early Learning Center Program. Mariana Sanchez is here to give us that report.
Hi, good evening. Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for having me here tonight, and I think it's perfect timing because, you know, this week is National Week of the Young Child. It's an event sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And the intent of Week of the Young Child is to celebrate the joy and wonder of young children and the gifts of energy, excitement, and thirst for learning that they exhibit in these early years. So tonight, I want to just take a few minutes to share with you two of the areas that we've been working on this year. By the way, I have to tell you about my boys in that picture. They, we just purchased these blocks, they're outdoor blocks, so that they can build outside. And on that wall is a mural of a train, and so they were out there trying to figure out, you know, five, four-year-old boys trying to figure out what to do with these blocks, and one of them said, "Hey, let's build a train." So that's their train, so it was exciting to see them in action. So one of the first things that I'd like to share with you this year is that we've been working on early childhood positive behavior intervention support. And the work that we're doing is based on the work conducted by the Center on Social and Emotional Foundations for Early Learning. They're a national resource funded for disseminating research and evidence-based practices to early childhood programs. So PBIS in the preschool years is built on the foundation of preventing problem behavior through environmental arrangement, effective teaching and programming, teaching children appropriate social and communication skills, and developing individualized interventions for children who need more support. The goal of PBIS in the early childhood pyramid, which you see up there, is to create an environment where every child feels good about coming to school, designing an environment that promotes child engagement, and focuses on teaching children what to do. So this year, in January of this year, at CELC, we began the first in a series of professional development opportunities for the staff. Our initial sessions have focused on the bottom levels of the pyramid, and you'll see we have nurturing and responsive relationships and high-quality supportive environments. So as a staff, we've spent time looking at how do we currently build positive relationships with children and families? We've examined what are good and effective practices for building those responsive relationships. And then the other area that we've spent time engaged in learning about is how do we design a physical classroom space that's conducive to learning? And what environmental cues do we have in place to help children navigate through the classroom setting? We've looked at schedules and routines. We've also looked at how we manage transitions in a preschool classroom and having clear expectations for behavior in a classroom. The next area that we've been working on as a school site is language and literacy. And so we focused this year on two components of language and literacy in preschool. One of them is comprehension of age-appropriate text, and the other is about concepts of print. And in effort to, we utilize the California Preschool Learning Foundations and the curriculum frameworks as our guide. And when we talk about focusing on concepts of print in early childhood, our teachers are teaching children about book handling behaviors, such as reading a book or knowing what's the front cover and the back cover, reading from left to right, reading from the top to the bottom, turning pages one at a time, and moving through the book from the front to the back, unless you're like me, who likes to know what happens before you start reading the book. But it also includes helping children understand that print can be read and conveys specific meanings. Concepts about print also includes teaching children about the different units of prints. So we look at a letter, we look at words, and that letters make up individual words, and we look at sentences and talk about how individual words make up sentences. The other area of focus was comprehension of age-appropriate text, and in that area, the teachers have helped children comprehend stories by talking with them as stories are shared, and by asking questions and responding to the children's comments and questions, such as, "Why did he do that?" Or, "Why is he crying?" Or, "What do you think will happen next?" While reading a book, while reading books, teachers also explain the meaning of new words, helping children develop vocabulary. And because parents are their child's first teacher, you'll see in the bottom a picture of our parents, who participate in our Latino family literacy project. So our next steps for 2015 is to continue with our Positive Behavior Intervention Support. We're looking at doing school-wide implementation in August. And then we're also going to be looking at targeted professional development in the area of PBIS and language and literacy. At this point, all of the teachers have completed an inventory of skills, and so our interventions, our professional development in the area of PBIS will be very targeted to the skills, to their skill level. And lastly, I'd like to leave you with a quote by Albert Einstein that says, "Play is the highest form of research." And so when I look at these pictures, I see children, I see our future engineers and architects and designers, and at this age, they're all engaged actively through play. So thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? I just have to tell you, I just love watching these kids. They're like sponges. I mean, their business is to learn, explore, and find out, and so you can't help, but, you know, as they play, they're learning, and you guys do such a great job of that, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Alright, moving on to item 6.3, Report on Benchmark Assessment Results. Dr. Kaiser?
Good evening, President Gilliland and board. That's a pretty hard act to follow, looking at cute little children. Now we're going to look at some cute numbers. Nobody ever wants to follow preschool, ever. Okay, this is our mid-year data report, and the report will be framed in our three LCAP goals. The first goal has to do with student achievement, and we looked at intervention. This year, we have been working with the program Read 180, and it's been used with our at-risk students. The numbers that you will see are the numbers of the mid-year report for Santa Fe, Clifton, and the high school, and it represents the students who are below basic. And what we've seen is that we've had a decline at Santa Fe in their below-basic students. They enrolled the largest number, and so that represents a pretty good implementation of the program. At Clifton, theirs has been rather static, and then at Monrovia High School, they've only been using the program with their special ed students, and it hasn't been very many students. Our LCAP goal number one also encompasses the work with our English-language learners. And as far as that goes, we've looked at our annual measurable achievable objectives, which are called AMAOs. Our first objective is to have students progress on the California English Language Development Test, the CELT. Our second AMAO takes a look at students who become proficient on the CELT. So the first one just looks at improvement, the second one looks at actual proficiency. And then number three is proficiency in English. This year, none of the districts were measured in AMAO 3 because we do not have results from a state test. So here is what our data slice looks like. In 2014, it's represented by gray, 2015 by the golden rod. In AMAO 1, we had a... the golden rod. In AMAO one, we had a nice increase. AMAO two, which looked at the students who have been here for less than five years, we had a slight decrease and a nice increase with our long-term English learners in AMAO two, students who have been here for a greater number than five years, in terms of children that have increased their level of levels on the CELT. And here is what our breakdown looks like in each band. We've had decreases in early-intermediate and increases in intermediate and early-advanced that are significant. Our AMAO one in our grade spans, and we see that as a district, we have improved grades K through five. There's been great improvement, a slight dip in six through eight, and a very nice improvement in grades nine through 12. Our reclassification data, those students who we deem as being fully English-language proficient and reclassify as English-only students, the number this year is 112. And our number of English language learners has gone up significantly each year.
Dr. Kaiser?
Yes?
I'm sorry I didn't ask this during the study session, but I was curious, based on that 855, do we have a feel for like how many languages we have in the school? I remember that Wild Rose thought they had about 20.
Yeah, we have, that's about the number that we have in the district overall. Primarily, the students are made up of, the English language learners are made up of Spanish speakers. We do have Chinese and Farsi and several other languages also represented in Monrovia.
Thank you.
The other, languages other than Spanish are very, the numbers are very small in each category. So our reclassification rates, we're reclassifying about 14.9, which is a great rate. And then the numbers of reclassified students at each school are represented here. Our LCAP goal in terms of student achievement, we've also been looking at our DNF rates at the high school. And we've looked at course content as it's become more difficult with the implementation of the Common Core. And our departments and our administration continue to analyze the student outcome data, putting in appropriate structures and support in the classrooms. And this is a look at the DNF rate. In grades six, seven, and eight, there has been an overall decrease in DNFS, whereas in grades nine, 10, 11, and 12, we've had an increase. This data has been looked at by our administration and our departments, and they are taking measures to take a look at this and to help our students achieve higher grades in their courses. Our second goal on the LCAP is third-grade literacy. The metric that we use to measure this is called the SRI or the Scholastic Reading Inventory, and it measures the lexile levels, which is a discrete reading level for each child. The anticipated growth for one course year of study is about 100 points. The average growth for Monrovia this year has been 173 points as of March. Grade level expectancy at the end of third grade is a lexile level of 599. It is 65 points higher than the levels represented in the previous standards. The standards have become more rigorous. Monrovia students as of March are reading at an average of 521 on the lexile metric, leaving a goal of 78 points growth by the end of May. And so this is a chart that represents the growth of our third-grade students. And looking at the rectangle in the upper part of the graph, that is the range of our third grade. We want them to enter third grade at the bottom of that range and leave third grade at the top of the range. And you can see that all of our third-grade averages are within the range right now, some at the lower end. But we've also noted that the students, when they entered third grade, they were far from the range. And so as we're looking at program improvement for next year, we're looking at beginning to work with second-grade teachers and giving them some strategies to improve the reading lexiles of those students that are leaving second grade. Our third goal for the LCAP was student engagement. And here, we've looked at grade-point average attendance, suspension and expulsion rates, and school climate surveys. We have some comparable data in the first three areas. We do not have any comparable data for school climate surveys yet. That will be out in June. So our grade-point averages, we see that in grade nine, we have a slight increase, in grade 10, a slight decrease, a greater decrease in 11, and a slight decrease in grade 12. And again, our departments are looking at these in terms of how can we help our students improve these averages. Our attendance rates are looked at for the first 72 days of school, and we've had a slight decrease from the first to the second. And the personnel in our schools are aware of these rates, and they're looking at how we can incentivize attendance and put in attendance programs to help parents and students understand the importance of coming to school. 96.47 is a decent attendance rate. And here it is broken out by school, in the elementary, and here it is broken out by secondary. We also have been looking at suspension and expulsion rates. This year, we implemented PBIS in all of our schools with leadership teams coming together to meet five times this year to receive training and to develop positive behavior intervention systems and plans for their schools. Data was examined regularly on suspensions and on office referrals and alternatives to punishments have been looked at in terms of teaching students positive behavior strategies. And as a result of that, we've seen a tremendous decrease in our suspensions this year, elementary, middle, and high school. In the rate and also in the number of days. And our absences due to suspensions have gone down. And so in conclusion, as we develop revisions for the LCAP, the data points serve as information to inform the improvements that are to be made. And the data is to be shared widely with all stakeholders as we seek input to create goals and targets that are meaningful for MUSD. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Nope. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. We'll move on to item six point eight. Could I have a motion, please?
Second.
All right, Dr. Therosian.
The nonviolence program agreement is being submitted for your approval. This will allow us to create six-year plans and four-year plans and monitor them regularly for our students in middle school and in high school, in all our schools. I do want to call attention to one line that, to ensure that everybody is clear that the school will retain full ownership rights of the information in the education records it provides to the clearinghouse. And upon termination of this agreement, the clearinghouse will immediately discontinue use of any information that has been provided to it by the school, and will further destroy all information provided under this agreement after all retention requirements for federal, state, and local audits have expired, but in no event later than six months after termination of the agreement. Again, the cybersecurity of our student information is equally important to us. And I am thankful to the board to making sure that this is included within the agreement.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item seven point six, 2006 measure-in bond refinance. Could I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Wu.
Yes. And this just sent out several requests for proposal to top underwriter who's handing the K-212 Public Education bond issuance. And we received five response. And among these five response, the business department recommended board to approve high RBC Capital Market as our underwriter to refinance our 2006 measure M bond because of their reputation as well as the low cost for the fees. And as a matter of fact, the RBC Capital Market has already helped district issue the 2012-2013 term because they are the leading underwriter for the legal to help the district issue term to solve the cash issues because of budget cut in the previous years.
Any questions or comments?
A real quick comment on this policy. What we're looking to do at this point in time is just to refinance existing bonds. We're not looking to take any additional money out. We are, the board is really just looking after the city and the taxpayers. This particular move is going to save approximately $2 million over the life of the existing bonds. And that is directly related to how much taxes you pay. So we will continuously look to create the best situation possible and know that this is, although there is expenses, much like refinancing your house, it's rolled into the bottom-line savings of that $2 million. We've experienced with this particular firm in the past. So this should go rather easily as far as financings go. And I don't think we're anticipating any type of issues at all.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item seven point seven, project change order number one for modernization. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, Mr. Marchetti.
This item is a change order to the roof project, Building O, the seismic retrofit. The part of the roof, we found after the, started the roof demo, that there was, the insulation that was stated on the drawings to remain in place was not able to, unable to separate the existing roof from the insulation due to the tar that's used to put the roof down. So that insulation had to be removed, as well as the flashing around the edges of the building was also slated to remain in place. And we had to remove that as well because it could not be separated from the roofing membrane.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you for hanging in there with us, Mr. Marchetti. All right, moving on to item eight point four, memorandum of understanding with Azusa Pacific University. So moved.
Second.
Dr. Therosian.
Thank you. The board is requested to ratify memorandum of understanding with Azusa Pacific University in order for the school district to participate and provide educational field experiences may be called for in the requirements of the various authorized credentials for public school service. It is to the mutual benefit of the university and the district to make a program of educational field experiences available to university candidates at district facilities. There is no direct cost. However, the district would provide workers' compensation coverage, including liability coverage for district employees, as in any other case.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item nine point one, expulsion case number 1415-06. Could I have a motion?
I move that expulsion case number 1415-06, student 111110919, be expelled but suspended enforcement with the following stipulations: to attend counseling for 20 hours, behavior positive towards teachers and authorities and students, no further behavior infractions, student may select a fresh start at Santa Fe for the remainder of the current term of the 2415 school year. The expulsion is based on finding a fact that student violated following provisions of the Education Code 48900-7, made terroristic threats against school officials and/or school property.
I want to be clear in the motion. It had an increase in grades, wasn't there?
No, we...
We did not agree to do, we didn't agree to put that in as a stipulation.
I just want clarification.
That came along with the periodic monitoring that's required in those stipulations, right? That's part of the monitoring.
Yes.
Any other, can I have a second before we?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussions or questions? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams? Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item nine point two, expulsion case number 1415-07.
I move that expulsion case number 1415-06, student number 111113470, be held to an enforcement of an order of expulsion for a period of not more than one calendar year. This commences on the 15th day of April and ends on the 15th day of April 2016. The expulsion is based on finding a fact that student violated the following provisions of the Ed. Code 48900A1, caused, attempted to cause, or threatened to cause physical injury to another person, and A2, willfully used force or violence upon the other person, except in self-defense.
Ms. Zuko, you did mean 1415-07, correct?
No, that's not what mine says. I'm sorry. My thing says 06. Is it 07?
It is 07.
It is 07.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was a few.
Oh, yeah.
It's...
I believe the first case was 1415-06, and this is case number 1415.
It's a typo. It's 07.
07. Okay, so that's your motion is for 07.
My student is for 07, 1415-07.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
Absolutely. Item nine point three, resolution and remembrance of the Armenian genocide and man's inhumanity to man. So moved.
Second.
Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Gilliland. April 24th is a difficult day for Armenians around the world. As it marks this year, the 100th commemoration of the Armenian genocide, widely recognized as the first genocide of the 20th century. And this resolution commemorates not only the genocide of the Armenian people, but also the various atrocities that have continued since then, and resolves in the spirit of that remembrance for the governing board of the Monrovia Unified School District to affirm its commitment to the teaching of tolerance, understanding, and the appreciation of diversity in our schools and in our community.
Any discussion? Ms. Marikanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item nine four point four, proposed revision to board policy 1312.3. Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Gilliland. This is the presentation of the first reading of the proposed revision to the Uniform Complaint Procedures and accompanying administrative regulations. The revisions are being recommended to board policy and administrative regulations regarding complaints that fall under the scope of the Uniform Complaint Procedures and Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures. The policies have been revised based upon the recommendations from the California School Boards Association and will be presented for a second reading at the April 29th board meeting.
Any discussion? Is everybody okay with that coming back on consent? Thank you very much. Item nine point five, Los Angeles County School Trustees Association. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Excuse me?
So moved.
Okay. Any, yeah, Dr. Therosian.
Tell me about this, Mr. Gilliland. I mean, what's he gonna do for us in this vote here?
You want to talk to this, or shall I? I can talk to it.
Perhaps you should, and I could read your biographical information if you like.
I'm good.
No, we don't... No, there you go.
Thank you for serving on Laxa. Someone has to. Thank you.
Especially with the items that are coming before Laxa. Absolutely. And the proposed annexation of part of our district.
Yes.
So I don't mind at all. Any other discussion? Ms. Maracanda.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
9.6, pending board issues. Dr. Therosian.
We continue to move down the list of both cyclical items as well as items presented during a specific time of year. Today, we had the privilege of hearing Mariana Sanchez, who is really an expert communicator, and delighted to hear about the great things happening at the Early Learning Center.
Any comments, questions? All right, thank you. 10.0, old business. 10.1, next regular board meetings. There will be one on the 29th, the 13th. On the 19th, we will have a joint meeting with the Personnel Commission to recognize our classified employee of the year, and the other dates are calendared for May and June. Any other old business? New business? There are several dates to calendar there, including Memorial Day observance. And we've got the last day of school on our agenda here now, June the 5th, and a lot of activities between now and then. Summer school schedule is on the list. Open house events still to come in May at Brad Oaks and Santa Fe. Any other new business? Now, are we going into a closed session? So we will adjourn the regular session and convene the closed session at... Okay? We will recess the regular session and convene the closed session at 9:11.